That's a pretty. There we go. I'm hearing a weird message that I've forgotten. It is saying. Failed to start the video camera, please select another video camera and setting sound here.
If you restart it, you can get it. I did get a buyout update this morning.
I haven't started it since whenever, oh no, actually, okay, I'll give you a rip.
Would you like us to wait, Galena?
Um, no.
Okay.
Just do like I did this morning.
Hello, San Miguel County. This is a continuation of the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting on Wednesday, July 16th, 2025. It is now 5:15 PM and we have reconvened for Agenda Item 15A, which is Continued Public Discussion of the Deed Restriction: A Legal Review and Interpretation. And I think many of us here have had a busy day and probably many people online as well. So I'm just going to suggest that we have another, what do we call it? Moment of silence for grounding and gratitude, just bring ourselves here. Thank you. Normally, when Commissioner Waring chairs these meetings, he ends that moment of silence by saying, "We're lucky to be here." And that's how I'm feeling. I was reflecting during the break on the fact that I was sitting in my deed restricted house and how lucky I was to be there. I have had now two deed restricted homes in the community. One that we bought in 1992 or '03 when I was expecting our first child. And then the other one in 2019 where we were thinking about leaving the community because we could no longer afford a free market home that we could actually even like paint and put in new windows. And so we were really lucky to land a deed restricted house. And that's what I feel right now. And I expect a lot of people on this call who live in deed restricted housing feel similarly, that we are lucky to be here. We are really lucky that our, the previous people who ran this region set this program up and, you know, have worked tirelessly for decades to refine it and to try to make it work for our community. And while I think we can all agree it's unfortunate that we're in this situation today where we need to revisit it again and make sure that we are, have been doing it right and that we are doing it right going forward. The reality is, we are really lucky to be here and to be living in deed restricted housing. And there are people in this room who are not living in deed restricted housing, who are struggling. And I just, I'm going to really keep that in mind myself as we work through this. Certainly, the people who are implementing the deed restriction all these years thought they were doing the right thing. They were working really hard to keep our workforce here, qualified workforce, members of the workforce who are doing work here for the benefit of our community and economy, while also preserving and protecting the deed restricted housing stock. And that is, I believe, our intention here today is to do our best to fix what hasn't been being taken care of correctly and to make sure that we're doing it right, but really with the same intention, which is to keep our workforce housed and to protect the limited, sadly, deed restrictions, deed restricted housing stock that we have. So that's kind of where I'm coming from today. And I don't know if anybody else up here wanted to make any, any comments before we get into it. Otherwise, I can just take us through the flow of the meeting. Anybody else or? But Lance?
Thought that was very well said, Commissioner, and I appreciate your reminder. I share your deed restricted housing gratitude. And I am also in agreement that it's unfortunate that we are here this evening trying to un-snarl some things, but I am happy to do it. And I know that we are going to be working this evening to balance the needs that you've described, workforce housing, equity fairness, and trying to overcome what may be past omissions, errors, or straight up mistakes. And that's never fun, it's never easy, and we're going to get it done.
That's right, we are going to get it done. And given the fact that we both live in deed restricted housing, we should remind everybody of that case. And I have a conflict disclosure statement I'd like to read. As we have at past discussions, the following agenda item will involve discussion of deed restricted properties within San Miguel County and the operation of certain covenants and restrictions. In the interest of transparency and to address any perceived conflict of interest, I would like to disclose on the record that I am an owner of deed restricted property within San Miguel County and have entered into a covenant with the county for that property. I do not believe this will impact my ability to remain fair and impartial for purposes of today's discussion.
With you.
Okay, thank you, Lance. So I thought that the way we had our last public meeting on this topic went well. And so I'm going to take the same approach. And if anybody up here thinks differently, let me know. But the idea would be for staff to make another presentation, kind of bringing us all up to speed on where we've been and then the work that you have done since then at the direction of the commissioners. We thought, we will follow that presentation with Commissioner questions and maybe a little discussion. Not promising we won't interject with questions, but anyway, that's, that's going to be all happening up here to begin with. Following that part where the commissioners have questions, discussion with themselves and staff, we will open it up for public comment. And as is our practice, we will have three minutes for people to ask questions and make comments, just trying to keep it kind of streamlined and tight. After that, we will have a response from staff and the commissioners on anything that we are able to respond to at that time. And then if there is still time and everybody's still standing, we will have a second round of public comment so that there is not back and forth during the meeting, but there's an opportunity for, you know, follow-up and things like that. So that's how it'll go. I hope that works for everybody. And if so, I will turn it over to either Maura or Jared or both.
Jared's going to kick us off.
Okay.
Slide. Here on my screen. All right, thank you, Commissioners. Been two or three, I guess, three weeks since we last had a conversation about this. We've been trying to work hard at both summarizing and answering a number of the questions that were asked as part of that. And we'll get into a number of those. We've broken it out into slides. Again, a big thanks to our staff, Nancy Willis, Carmen, Mike, Maura, again, for really jumping in and helping to pull a lot of this together. So without further ado, I'll go through this update. So our agenda for today, or this presentation agenda for today is to review, or an overview of the meeting and discussion and questions that were asked in that June 18th meeting. A review of the deed restricted properties, a little bit of a history on the adoption and implementation of the covenant. We've done some additional research into that. Bit of a comparison of the deed restriction to that covenant and then the staff recommendation and potential alternatives that were requested that will kind of lead us into discussion, I think. We always have this caveat, and we've been saying this for every time we have this discussion, you know, every deed restriction is very specific. And everybody should go read their deed restriction. Most or a lot of folks have done that and better understand that today. So when we talk about things, it may not apply specifically to every circumstance. And we'll, we try and call that out in a number of different areas throughout the presentation. So. So just a quick recap of that meeting on the 18th. We gave an overview of the Affordable Housing Program and purpose, a summary of the Land Use Code deed restriction and timeline of revisions of those restrictions, of the Land Use Code restriction. An overview of the covenant and the amendments that happened for 2023. A summary of those legal questions that we had asked outside council and what those responses were. And then our staff recommendation on how to move ahead with that new legal guidance or that amended legal guidance that we had received. Since that meeting, we took feedback. We continue to have discussions as staff, how to best implement, how to propose some alternatives, and further research. So just a quick recap of the legal questions and answers that were posed and discussed at the previous meeting. The first one, does a LUC deed restriction apply based on the code as it existed at the time of the deed restriction or a vintage? Or would it be subject to the changing code? And that was responded to, that the original land use code that was in effect when that property was first deed restricting would apply. And unless the deed restriction had specific language that said it changes with time or is otherwise amended by signing a covenant, that is the land use code deed restriction that would continue to apply. The second question, does a deed restriction, either land use code or covenant, run with the land regardless of the transfer of property? And the answer to that was yes. It does run with the land. It binds the original parties and their successors or assigns their app. Again, unless they sign something separately or paper. And the last one was for ownership qualification. Would a new buyer be required signing a new covenant? Or do they have an option to retain the prior owner's deed restriction? While the county can offer the new covenant, every owner has an option of the existing deed restriction on a piece of property or the new covenant if we, the county, want to offer it. And we have. That is just a brief summary of those items. And so to just kind of summarize what our recommendation from that June 18th meeting was, it was that based on the answers to those legal questions, our recommendation was to offer the option to revert to the previous deed restriction for all owners of, who transferred ownership of property during the last three years. And that, that would be those folks who are on a covenant and would go back to a land use code or are on a covenant and would move to an earlier version of the covenant that the previous owner was on.
Can I just clarify? That would be offering them to go one step back, right? To the deed restriction that was assigned to their property when they purchased it?
Correct.
Okay.
So this, this is ultimately, we have heard, "I didn't get an option." And we are saying, for those people who have purchased in the last three years, we're doubling down and making sure you've got the option. We're giving you that. And again, that does exclude those specific covenants that apply to some properties, Pinion Park, Rio Vista's, because those are very specific covenants that were not offered. You didn't really have an option for those specific types of properties. And to reiterate that three-year time period that we've suggested, covers the applicable period of the newest covenant. So everyone who is on the 2023 covenant by this, by this application would receive an option to revert to a previous version of the covenant or the previous land use code of the owner. It also covers the timeframe of the last compliance cycle in full. It covers the time period where we did hear concerns about, "I didn't get an option." And it does cover the statute of limitations, which is the legal standard.
And every time I, you know, you take, we discuss this, I, something different sinks in. And I think the reason that, tell me if I have this right, why it matters so much that the three years covers the period of the newest covenant is because that's the one where the most significant changes were made. Is that right?
Correct, and I believe we've got.
We're going to get to that.
To kind of bring that even.
Right, yeah. Okay, thank you.
My turn?
You will, let it rip.
I have a lot of notes on this slide, so. So we had a number of questions that were raised by the public and the commissioners at the June 18th meeting. And these are kind of the four key questions that we saw as relating to specifically the question about covenants and the potential option to revert and questions that also came up with respect to the idea of this living land use code. So the first two question, well, I would say the question we got heard the most is, "Why aren't you going more than three years back?" And that's something we will touch on in the presentation today. And then the second question, which came about sort of related to, "Why was the covenant created in the first place?" And an understanding from some members of the public that that was developed and offered to owners because there was this interpretation by the county that the land use code would change over time and apply to properties on the land use code. And I will address that as well in the presentation. The second two questions, I'm just going to touch on briefly here. So it's, "What was the operative document for land use code deed restrictions? And how do future land use code amendments apply?" And then a specific question that we received by Annalise Rybell, which was, "Could a title company or a lender affect a change to a deed restriction by attaching language at some point that said, 'as amended.'" And those two are kind of interrelated, so I'm just going to address them together. The short answer to question four is no. So the operative document for a land use code deed restriction may vary from property to property, but generally, it is the plat note and, and any subsequent amendment to the deed restriction that may have occurred in the title history. But for Aldosaro, Lawson, Two Rivers, and San Bernardo, those properties were first deed restricted through the plat notes as part of the PUD process. And the date of the plat is what establishes which version of the land use code would be applied to those properties. And so the only way that that would not be the case is if an owner at some point signed a deed that provided that the property is subject to the land use code deed restriction as amended. And I just want to note, we have not seen any specific examples of this. Granted, we haven't gone through the title history for every property, but, so it is a possibility, but I'm not aware at this time of any examples of that. And the question that was raised by Annalise was, sometimes there are situations where a title company may have, like their certification and exceptions that are attached to the deed as part of the transaction. And sometimes that will include language that has some, you know, "subject to all rules, regulations, et cetera, as amended or as may be amended." That is not something that the county would view as an alteration of the deed restriction. Third parties like a title company or a lender don't have the authority to alter the county's deed restrictions. That could only be done by agreement between the property owner and the county. So from our perspective, we wouldn't recognize any type of document like that that may be attached to a deed as affecting an amendment to the deed restriction. And I'll just pause there in case there are questions on that, because that's a little.
So in short, sorry to cut you off.
No, go ahead.
So what is signed or what the deed restriction that is in place stands unless it is written otherwise by the county? And any of that extraneous language from the title company or lender about any additions or alterations wouldn't stand on top of it, just understanding this.
As it relates to the county's enforcement of the deed restriction, yeah.
That's great clarification.
And that's another one, I haven't seen a particular example of that, but I did have a conversation with Annalise just about how this comes up in the closing process. And so just.
Thanks for following up with that.
Yeah. Go ahead in the next slide.
And this, this slide, we just kind of summarize our numbers again. I know we did it with a map a few times, but this, this again helps to give us what universe we're talking about. So there are 349 total deed restricted properties in the unincorporated area of the county. 110 of those properties are currently on the version of the land use code deed restriction. 239 are on some other deed restriction, some other version of a deed restriction, meaning a covenant in most cases. And that breakdown is 122 are on a special covenant. So those Pinion Park examples, those Rio Vista examples, some multifamily, Alium and TSG, school district lots and the like. And then the remaining 117 are on our, a version of the covenant template, be it the 2010s, the 2016, 2021, or the 2024. So just kind of, it, it almost breaks down into thirds where of the properties, we have, you know, a third on land use code, a third on those special covenants, and a third on a version of the covenant template, so to speak.
And I just, I will just note that the, the plat note dates that we have for kind of the big buckets of properties we're talking about, Aldosaro, Lawson, Two Rivers, and San Bernardo, date from April 1992 to May 1996. So that's kind of the window of what the land use code deed restriction is that we would apply based on that original restriction.
This slide, again, just kind of context to revisit what that timeline looked like. And that included, you know, that, that really this program started in May of 1991. We had a number of land use code amendments throughout the 1990s until 2001, where there were some substantive amendments. And then there were occasional amendments to the land use code thereafter. But in 2008, '09, that was when the work group was developed to really work on a covenant for a number of reasons. And Maura will go into some of that in a moment. And I just wanted to point out here, this, the one ad I did on this slide from last time to this time is just kind of illustrating where that option to revert per our recommendation would be. So from that June 1st, 2022 until current. And at one point I did want to make is, you know, in conversations with SMRAHA, they have mentioned that having these conversations has opened them to, they are offering all potential new owners an option of either the previous restriction or the new covenant. And based on those conversations, there are folks coming in saying, "This conversation is happening at the county, and so we want something else." Kind of almost buffet style, they're requesting other things. And we wanted to clarify, that is not available today.
Right.
Unless there is subsequent board action. And so kudos to Pam because she's been trying to address those questions, explain that, you know, we still have what we can offer and anything else is currently not in rules, so to speak. And so that being said, whenever we can clarify those rules, we can also, you know, hopefully start amending our process as need be. Because if we were to take staff recommendation, you know, will we go into the compliance process? But we know there may be sales between now and then.
Sure.
That we're going to have to do some extra. And this one is kind of a summary of those 117 properties that would be under review. So the second bullet point in particular kind of spells out, properties currently on the land use code would not be really considered for reversion because they haven't really changed, right? They're in their original state. So we're really talking about those on covenants. And those 117, as I previously mentioned, that are on a covenant template, so to speak. So to give you a sense of those, of those 117 properties, 98 are on a version, are, are on one of these versions from 2023 or 2010 to 2021. And another 19 are on the current 2023 covenant version.
So that, it, it should say 98 are on a version from 2010 to 2021.
Just up, up until the county adopted the latest version. the county adopted the latest version, yeah.
Yeah, so it would be on one of those from twenty-ten to twenty twenty-one. I think that is accurate. Commissioner Gleason, yeah. So of those, um, twenty-nine, what was this? Getting myself mixed up. If we were to, um, so there's ninety-eight on a previous version of the covenant. There's nineteen on the twenty twenty-three covenant. Um, and if those all, let's say we go back and we say everything on a covenant can revert to whatever the previous version was, if we were gave it an option to revert. Um, twenty-nine of those would go back to a prior covenant. Um, while eighty-eight would revert to a land use code restriction.
So those are two different ways you're breaking down the one seventeen. Ninety-eight and nineteen is one breakdown, and then twenty-nine and eighty-eight is the other.
Yeah, ninety-eight and nineteen is the current state.
Yep.
What, that's the signed covenants of the day.
Yep.
If every one of those covenants were offered an option to revert, their options would be twenty-nine of them would be back to another covenant, while eighty-eight would be to a land use code. And the, the last one, just again restating that those specific covenants are kind of outside of this consideration because they are specific to various pieces of property. Any questions about those?
All right. Um, so I'm gonna get in a little bit of the history of how the covenant came about um, originally. And this is based on a two thousand nine memo that's in the county's files that, um, as I understand, it was shared with the various HOAs of the neighborhoods. Um, and it appears that the county did work closely with the HOAs to develop the covenant initially, um, and that the covenant as it was written was to incorporate the land use code, uh, as it was at the time and any amendments that were deemed to be less restrictive by the HOAs. Um, so there was, I think, a back and forth process where the county worked with the HOAs to determine what provisions, um, should be put in place in the covenant. Um, and the purpose of developing the covenant was, there were several purposes, um, but primarily to ensure that the rules and regulations that apply to the deed restricted properties couldn't be changed without the owner's consent and that they wouldn't evolve over time. Um, so we've heard that there was previously a understanding, um, that the land use code would change over time and that would apply to the land use code deed restricted properties. Um, I think there was some disagreement between the county and the property owners about that, um. But we also have, the way the land use code is written allows for less restrictive changes to be made over time and those to be applied to the properties. Um, so regardless, we have kind of an evolving land use code and it that makes it difficult to determine which set of rules applies to a property that's on the land use code deed restriction at at any point in time. Um, so the idea of the covenant was to just, here is a set of rules that will not change, that will be set in stone for this property. Um, there also was, I think, the the purpose of, another purpose of the covenant was to clarify and address some specific issues that were not at the time and may still not be, um, clearly addressed in the plat notes definitely, um, but also the land use code and any other agreements. And this would, the purpose of this was to increase certainty for the property owners when it came to compliance and how certain processes would take place, um, and to reduce the need for exceptions, because the covenant does include some more detailed descriptions of situations that I think the county and property owners had learned over two decades of implementing this program, things that could have been written more clearly. Um, so the county's records indicate that at the time that the covenant was initially developed, um, that owners would be given the option to sign the covenant, that there would be no requirement or obligation for anyone to sign the covenant. Um, and that first version was adopted in May of two thousand ten.
Yeah, I I read that, um, it was called like Exhibit D or something, um, that document that outlines kind of the purpose of of the twenty-ten covenant. I think it's very clear that it was an option. It said that several times, that nobody was going to be required or obligated to sign it. And that's important because I, I think that's a has been a point of contention. You know, people have different memories of that time, but that particular document clearly states that it was an option.
Right. All right, so I'm gonna give kind of a high level overview of the comparison of the key provisions of the land use code. This is the nineteen nineties land use code. There were some changes to the land use code in the early nineties. Um, but the substantive provisions, like how you qualify and what the key restrictions were, did not change during that relevant time period. So I'm summarizing those and comparing to those two thousand ten to twenty twenty versions of the covenant. Um, just so people can get a better idea of really what are the differences between the two, um, as it may help people evaluate what changes may have been made to their deed restriction. Um, so in terms of the term and duration of the deed restriction, both the land use code and the covenant, well, the land use codes specified, it would go for fifty years from recordation with the title and authorized the board to extend that for an additional fifty years. The covenant was written with a specific date in mind, but my understanding is that date was fifty years from the original, um, land use code deed restriction. So that date, May eighteenth, twenty forty-two, would have been that fifty years. Um, and also in the covenant, the commissioners may extend that for an additional fifty years. Um, with respect to can the deed restriction be amended? Under the land use code, it states it may not be amended without owner's consent unless it is less restrictive. In the covenant, it states shall not be amended without owner and county consent. Um, notice is to be given to the HOA and land use code amendments do not apply. I will note that the difference here between may and shall, that is actually the difference in the language. Um, but I don't read that as being legally significant, because in both cases, it is a restrictive provision. So it is things that the county may not or shall not do.
See.
Um, for ownership of other property, the land use code deed restriction, um, prohibits ownership of a single-family residence condo or lot-zoned residential within the R-one school district. Um, the covenant prohibits, um, an owner, occupant, spouse, or dependents from owning more than a ten percent interest in any residential property within the R-one school district. Um, so those are fairly similar. Uh, arguably, the covenant allows you to own some fraction of property, whereas the land use code does not. Um.
I think this is a good example of how the covenant helped to clarify the intent of the land use code.
Yes.
Personally.
Yes. Um, all right. And then these are really the two key provisions. So what is the definition of an employee to qualify for deed restricted housing? Um, under the land use code, uh, a person is required to earn their living primarily in the R-one school district by working thirty hours per week average for at least eight months out of the year. And there is also a qualification for, um, seniors over sixty years old that have been employed in this school district for at least five years. Under the covenant, this standard became, um, had additional provisions, so requires primary residents in the four county region for eight out of the twelve months prior to ownership. Um, they must have earned qualifying income for one thousand thirty-two hours of the twelve months prior and is currently ear- earning that income. Um, and then additionally, the household non-qualifying income cannot exceed the qualifying income. And then there were also standards for retired and or disabled and, um, alternative standards for qualifying as an employee. Um, and on this one, I will just note that the thirty hours a week average for at least eight months is basically equivalent to one thousand thirty-two hours that's in the covenant. So although it is specified in different language, those working hour requirements are effectively the same. Um, and then for source of income, under the land use code, it must be earned primarily within the R-one school district. Uh, whereas the covenant states that your employment requires your, a physical presence in the R-one school district or necessitates physical presence in R-one school district to provide goods or services to residents or visitors. And I'll touch on these a little bit more in another slide. Um, a few more provisions, uh, rentals. So under the land use code, uh, tenants must meet the definition of an employee. There's a requirement to certify their eligibility and there were no, uh, restrictions on how long the rental term had to be. Under the covenant, similarly, a tenant must earn qualifying income um, for thirty hours a week on average. Uh, but there is a rental term restriction. It must be at least thirty days. The sale transfer fee is one percent under both the land use code and the covenant for those time periods. Um, and then for vi- violations or failure to qualify, um, under the land use code, a a tenant must vacate within sixty days. An owner must list the home for sale within a year, and then there are limits imposed on the pricing of that sale. Um, listing. And similarly, under the covenant, there's an opportunity to cure within a year. Um, I think that would apply for either tenants or owners. Um, and then the property must be listed for sale within one year, also with limits on pricing. So just to go back, um, to that two slides ago, the key differences between the land use code and the pre-two thousand twenty-one covenant are really that employee standard and the, um, yeah, really the employee standard and where the income has to be made that, um, so the land use code does not clearly include any prohibition on household non-qualifying income exceeding qualifying or local income. So in theory, an employee owner and their spouse um, could make significantly more income from outside the R-one school district than they do within the R-one school district and still qualify, um, to purchase that deed restricted property. Whereas the covenant requires household qualifying income to exceed any non-qualifying income.
Yeah, um, I I think there are two things going on here. One, I think, and I wasn't part of the twenty-ten covenant, but my impression when I owned deed restricted housing back in the early nineties was that you were supposed to be making your income in the community. And I think, again, this is an instance where the covenant kind of clarifies the intent of the land use code. Um, and I also think at that time, when it was first written, the land use code, we didn't have remote workers. So it wasn't even something that had to be considered. And so again, the covenant kind of i- in that respect, takes into account a new reality and and clarifies the original intent. That's sort of how I read that. Does anybody feel differently than that? Anyway, that's my comment.
I think that's accurate, and I think the land use code was, you know, written in the early nineteen nineties, late eighties perhaps. Um, and yeah, I think at the time, it wasn't con- contemplated that you could potentially have significantly more income that wouldn't be made within the county or the school district, um. Which I think necessitated the change in the language, um, because we're now obviously in a time where you can work from many locations. Um, and then you can go to the next slide. And then just to recap briefly, the, what changes occurred in the twenty twenty-one and the twenty twenty-three versions of the covenant. Um, so the twenty twenty-one covenant, really the, the only substantive changes were the term, the duration of the deed restriction was extended to a hundred years, which would reset upon each transfer. Um, and then fines were added as a remedy to the county for violations of of the deed restriction. Um, and then the twenty twenty-three version, we covered this in the last meeting, but just to recap for everyone, this is where the most significant changes occurred to the deed restriction. Um, the hours worked, uh, requirement was increased from one thousand thirty-two to twelve hundred in the prior twelve months, um, with forty hours minimum in each of the prior eight months. The rental term minimum was increased from thirty days to twelve months. Um, and the, it applied the fifty percent local income threshold um, more explicitly and property ownership limits were extended to, oh, sorry, it 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 applied the fifty percent local income threshold to tenants and the property ownership limits to tenants. Um, and reduced the time to cure the ownership violation to a hundred and eighty-two days. There were other changes, but these were the most significant ones, um, that I wanted to highlight here.
This looks like a Jared slide.
This is a Jay.
Um, as, as commissioners, you may recall from last fall's presentation, we we had some data on sales trends, um, for forty units in that, um, previous evaluation. Thanks to help of a couple of my colleagues, we have filled out that data set since then. And we, this is a reflection of all deed restricted properties in the county um, and their sales trends for the last, since the inception of the program. And so one of the things I wanted to do here, because we heard a lot of concern that based on these various versions of deed restriction, um, I may be losing value in my home. And we, we cannot find anything in the actual sales records that would indicate that. So um, what this graph shows is the solid red line is the average sales price, uh, per year. As it fluctuates year over year, you can kind of see, um, how it climbed through the nineties at a pretty reasonable pace. We had some significant gains in the two thousands, early two thousands. You do see the effect of the, um, kind of, uh, housing bubble that happened in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Um, and prices did drop even in the deed restricted portfolio, and you see that really bottomed out in twenty twelve. And then it came roaring right back. Um, and you, you can see that variability, and some of that variability does apply to how many sales actually occur in any given year. Um, I think I noted it last time, but when you look at the twenty twenty-three year, it dropped significantly, and that's because that includes sales at Pinion Park, which were limited to, you know, a three hundred to a four hundred thousand dollar cost. So those twenty-three units selling really weighed down those averages. So those are the kind of things that you can see by looking at the average. But then what I also did is I just snapped that red dotted line. That is the average trend, um, based on just an exponential evaluation. And to add to that, I kind of broke it out by the green dotted line. That is the average trend of sale of land use code properties. The orange line, or the blue line rather, is the average sales trend of those on a covenant. And the orange line is that same thing, the average trend for those properties that are on a two thousand twenty-three covenant. Um, so again, this is just one of those things I wanted to take a look and see if versions are really impacting price significantly. And, um, the data doesn't show any sort of correlation to that. So we would kind of go back and we try to remind ourselves, and I've done this in all of my presentations. What's the purpose of the program? Um, and um, you know, we we have the intent to help preserve sufficient supply of affordable housing to meet the needs of locally employed residents in the R one school district, um while allowing free market practices to influence the sale and rental of affordable housing. Um, you know, it was said, we've we've had a couple of other meetings about housing needs assessments, um, other housing issues, and there was a lot of conversation during that housing needs assessment conversation about affordability. And I think that that is something that, you know, is this statement can kind of sometimes come at odds with itself of how do we preserve affordable housing while also allowing free market principles to govern? And it's it's a big challenge, um, because we know that things have become less affordable. Um, based on the average price um in twenty-twenty-five so far, um, somebody has to make two hundred and eight percent of AMI to afford that house at thirty percent of their income. Right? So um, we've, that graph shows that we have kind of got away from that affordability principle, but for a lot of folks who live in that housing, um, it's critical. It is the only way they've made it work, because we know our market rates, you know, that much further outreach, I think, in that housing needs assessment. It said six hundred and fifty to eight hundred percent AMI in order to afford thirty percent in market rate housing. So
I think it said you'd have to make six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to afford the average free market home annually.
And I I I think that we we just have a market that illustrates that it is a market of extremes. Um, and uh just painting that picture, and this is our challenge of how do we make it affordable in this market of extremes. So, back to the staff recommendation. After a lot of thought, a lot of um research, a lot of review, um, we are still recommending uh that we review the thirty-two properties that have been transferred in the past three years, and that would be June first, twenty-twenty-two through current. And I know that is now a little more than um, but we're trying to respect that's the time period that we previously mentioned. Um, those thirty-two properties, uh seventeen would have the option to revert to a prior covenant. And fifteen would have the option to revert to a land use code version. So um, with that said, we we would like to get the direction from the board. Uh ultimately, at the end of this meeting or as part of this meeting, to either proceed with our recommendation or proceed with some amendment to our recommendation. Um, and so uh we we think that some of the reasons we, or I, they're really the same reasons why we believe this is the right path. Um, it covers the area where we've heard concern. It covers all of those who are on the twenty-twenty-three covenant. It covers all of those during a time period where we did have a compliance cycle that was seen to as a a challenge. Um, and it does cover our uh statute of limitations. So that remains our recommendation. But we did pursue some alternatives.
So, yes, at your request, um, we did evaluate some alternative options for you to consider. Um, and I'll go through those here. So the first one provided um listed up here is to provide the offer to revert um to the prior deed restriction to all properties that are on a covenant. So going all the way back to two thousand ten, um, and as Jared summarized, that would be a hundred and seventeen properties in total. Twenty-nine of those could would have the option to revert to a prior covenant, and eighty-eight would have the option to revert to the land use code. Um, and just a little bit of pros and cons for this option for your consideration. Um, this is certainly the outcome that has been most heavily advocated for um by the public and the deed restricted property owners, um, and it would most likely address any potential claims against the county. Um, some cons are that this would significantly um weaken the pool of deed restricted properties in the county by reverting to a less restrictive version um and would potentially open up those properties to a a larger market, um, which could further increase property values. And it would move more properties back to a system where it's difficult to determine which set of rules apply to any given property, given that those less restrictive amendments to the land use code um may be applied to properties, and it's difficult to track which, what amendments those are and who determines what's less restrictive. Um, and I will also note um for the board that if if you were to consider going with this option, um, that would implicate both Commissioner Brown and Waring's properties. Um, and that would require us to more directly address the issue of potential conflicts of interest. Head on. Um, so any questions about that alternative right now? We'll keep going through the rest.
I I think there's another issue I have with that, and it goes back to the fact that the land use code was confusing as originally written and didn't really um capture like the intent really of the of the original. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not being very articulate, but it led to all those issues with interpretation and exceptions. And so if we put all these properties back on the land use code, we have another eighty-eight properties who are subject to that confusion. Um, and there, again, there's a reason we wrote the covenant. Anyway, that's just comes to mind too.
So the second option would be kind of an in-between of that first one and our recommendation, which would be to provide the offer to revert to properties sold or transferred within some other time period, being more than three years, but not all the way back. Um, the, I would say the pros and cons of that are essentially the same as the first alternative, but minimized proportionally to whatever time period you might consider. Um, the third option is for those properties um out that would revert to the land use code, um, you could identify a single uniform version to apply um to try and get a little bit more consistency and clarity um about what version actually applies. Um, the pros of this is, yeah, it would, it would give us kind of one set of rules to apply. Um, the cons, I would say, are similar um to the first one. It could weaken some land use code deed restrictions. And for the owners, it may eliminate those less restrictive amendments um from the applicable land use code if we were to take that version frozen in time. And then the final option would be for properties that are outside the three-year time period offer those um owners the option to revert to the two thousand ten version of the covenant. Um, so pros of this would be to provide some option to those owners that are outside the three years um and have expressed concerns. Cons would be um just given the significance or lack thereof in the changes between those earlier versions of the covenant. Um, this may be more of a paperwork exercise, um, because depending on which version someone's on now, um, it may not actually result in substantive changes to their deed restriction. Um, because of the the minimal scope of the changes that occurred, particularly two thousand ten to two thousand twenty. Tw- sorry, yeah.
And so if we extended it to properties outside the three-year period to go back to the twenty-ten, that would be a hundred and seventeen properties minus the ones that are in the three-year period, the thirty-two. Right? So that would include another eighty-four? I can't do that math um while I'm talking.
Something like that. I'm not good at math.
Eighty-five, yeah, okay. Additional eighty-five properties would be able to to revert.
But I think Maura's point there is that reverting back to a previous version of the covenant um unless it is the most recent, twenty-twenty-three, um, isn't probably much of a change. That if you're in twenty-twenty to go back to twenty-ten, doesn't change a whole lot of the rules for it. And that's why she mentioned it could be only just an exercise.
Kind of a paperwork, but it might also make people feel better if they felt like they were forced to sign something they didn't want to sign. If they had that option. Okay, we can talk.
Um, and then just one other thing I want to note is this is only, I think we're all on on the same page about this. Um, but just to make it clear, this is only looking at the historical deed restrictions and not anything moving forward. So we, of course, will want to put in some thought about um how we might change the program moving forward. But we'll leave that for another day.
Just for for that part, we're we're spending a lot of time, appropriate time, looking at the past of this program. And I I hope that we apply these lessons and the challenges of affordability that we have learned through them. Right? To our new deed restricted properties as they, as we develop them or as they get developed. And so it's it's one of these things where um looking forward, we we still have the twenty-twenty-three covenant, and we've heard that not a lot of people like it, but is it hitting the right tone? Um, and do we need to make amendments of the land use code as well in order to change some of these dynamics uh as well?
So Maura, when you're talking about going forward, are you talking about with new properties? Or are you talking about with sales that are happening going forward of existing properties? Okay, because I think we know now what we want to do with existing properties going forward.
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yep. Uh, you can go to the next slide. Um, so just a few more things for you to consider as you go into the discussion of these options. Um, so balancing the purpose of the county's affordable housing program with the concerns of individual owners. Um, Jared recapped that, the purpose of the the program. Um, and thinking about future implementation and management of land use code properties. Um, for properties that are on the land use code, I think we've we've covered this, but it is inherently more difficult to administer and determine compliance because of those less restrictive changes that have been made over time, um, which makes it challenging to determine what what is the complete set of rules that applies. Um, with respect to impacts to property interests, um, as I discussed, the the differences between the nineteen-nineties land use code and the pre-two thousand twenty-three covenant are not significant, but for the household non-qualifying income limitation, which does serve the purpose of the county's affordable housing program. Um, and likely the intent of the land use code deed restriction to begin with. Um, and so far, um, there has not been really an articulated or demonstrated impact to property rights or owner interests um by being on a covenant versus the land use code. Um, and just a bit of a recap of the, you know, how we got here. Um, these concerns were really raised, to my knowledge, um, the first that that the county had become aware of these concerns was only recently, um, twenty-twenty-three. So I don't know that we have any record of owners further back raising concerns about being required to sign uh the covenant. Um, and then also the affordability piece. Um, as Jared discussed, the prices continue to rise on deed restricted properties. And if more homes are on a less restrictive version, this could further um increase those prices and reduce affordability for the local workforce. Um, and then the timeline and procedure for the process, at the last meeting, um, Jared outlined kind of what we were thinking in terms of how we were going to roll this out um for that three-year lookback period. But if, I think if we're, if the board wants to go further back um or evaluate a different option, um, we may need to evaluate that timeline. Um, and just thinking about if if we needed a longer time period than initially proposed uh for offering those options and completing all of that paperwork. Um, but we do, you know, would would like to have a decision in the near term so we can get started working with SMRHA on implementing that. Um, and then related to that, just thinking about county and SMRHA staff time um that would go into this process.
And I, I think we there's a lot of food for thought, but I wanted to make sure and identify the the four questions we outlined were not the only four questions that were posed
Oh, yeah.
previous meeting. And so, um, while while I had kind of summarized all of those questions and kind of bunched them, the ones that we've kind of put together or put out there previous to now have been ones that applied to the deed restriction, right? The conversation at hand. Um, these other items came up, which include concern about our administrative policies as it comes to compliance, um, processes for requested hearings, application of physical presence requirement, um, the re- publishing an inventory of deed restrictions and exceptions, and uh some considerations of lender approval of deed restrictions if they are to be reverted. But again, all of these ones are kind of secondary to the decision about the deed restrictions themselves. So I wanted just to make sure, um, we heard everybody, we're still happy to hear everybody about these concerns. But we we want to make sure we're focusing on changes to the deed restrictions first. That way we can have subsequent conversations about administrative policy and procedure with either the board as the county housing authority or with the SMRHA board to proceed ahead.
Okay.
And then then we'll just have questions.
And to I just want to say before we move on to discussion of these options, because some of these options could benefit me personally and maybe Lance too. I had this discussion with Maura that um my husband and I are on the twenty-sixteen uh covenant. And so if we offered something that would take me back to a less restrictive covenant, that that would benefit me personally. And so I don't feel comfortable making a decision that would benefit me potentially personally, however marginally. And so whatever decision we make, um, I think that my property should be excluded from this option. I'll just stay on the twenty-sixteen um covenant, and I spoke with my husband about it, and he was fine with that. So thank you for guiding us through this um, more through this potential conflict. But I think if I make that request, that I will not have a conflict. Is that true?
If you were to, whatever action you're to, you would take if you were to exclude your property from that action, yes, that would eliminate.
A conflict. Okay, let's do that then.
As has been most of the evening, I'm in the same boat and I have the same request. Um, whatever we decide, if we decide something this evening, I'd like to exclude my property in Lawson Hill from that option and stay exactly where I am. So that there's no perception of conflict of interest and to allow me to continue this conversation with a clean conscience.
All right.
Thank you. Um, with that, I'd like to make kind of a observation that has been coming to me slowly, but I I think it might be a summary of the conundrum that the commissioners are in right now. And in layman's terms, what the land use code regulations allow is for folks that are, and there's no shame in being any one of these professions, a day trader, um, a Bitcoin miner, or someone who writes code for a living, all of which are valid occupations to own deed restricted housing in um to in the R one school district and fit within the rules. And what the biggest difference in my mind is between the land use code and the covenant is that the change then requires in the covenant for you to work here and own and make the majority of your household income here in for you to work here and own and make the majority of your household income here in the R1 school district. And to me, that change was made kind of at the same time as the dawn of the internet. When we first realized that there was suddenly an opportunity to make a lot more money out in the big world, but be able to live in this valley. And if we look back at the founding of the housing program that our forefathers and mothers created, the intent was clearly stated, it was to provide work for people locally working here. So I'm trying to frame this conversation for everyone that's listening in a in a really clear way, which is that whatever ground that we give towards the land use code, we're opening up the door and I'll just toss out another name and it's not a slur, but it's an easy acronym or an easy phrase to use in your mind, we're opening up the door to future tech bros. And if I were to sell under the land use code, I would be able to have folks coming from far away that would qualify. And that isn't, in my mind, what the deed restricted program here is for. And that's not what I hope to see. So I'm starting from that premise that the land use code is not applicable to today's realities.
I I agree with you, Lance. And yeah, that that when I think about putting like all 170 properties, going back one step and 88 more properties being on the land use code, it doesn't feel good at all because that opens up those 88 properties to remote workers who are A, able to make a ton more money and B, not actually providing the workforce that we need here and that we want to house here. So I I that is a concern of mine as well.
Yeah, and this truly is an an exercise for us in reeling back time and trying to understand what the rationale was. You know, Maura laid it out with her understanding of what, when the covenant in 2010 was put into place and and why. But it's it's an exercise for us in understanding that rationale and trying to really apply the intent of the deed deed restriction and who it's serving and why. And, you know, thinking about that time in the early 2000s and how the job market was evolving quite quickly and even just how businesses were navigating that at that time. And now trying to fulfill workforce needs and finding housing for that workforce. We really need to look at the deed restriction purpose, which is intended to help preserve a sufficient supply of affordable housing to meet the needs of locally employed residents in the R1 school district. So that that tech bro analogy does resonate with me, understanding how that could open up the doors for people who aren't truly qualifying and aren't working and contributing to the economic landscape here in in San Miguel County.
And because of their deeper pockets, further drive up the cost or the prices of deed restricted homes, which are getting more and more unaffordable.
That said, I I'm really kind of sensitive to our community members who are truly the fabric of the community, who feel that they maybe didn't have the option. I'm talking about folks that go past that three year statute of limitation timeframe. And I really heard those concerns in the last meeting, as I believe both of you did as well. And I I'd like to address that because it's not sitting that well with me to just move forward. All due respect to our staff and your, you know, recommendations based on your interpretation of the law and toeing the line. I I feel that we need to find some sort of middle ground there to really honor our people, our community. So hash that out.
I'm I'm leaning that way as well, Galena. I the recommendation two is like some other time period. And that I don't know what some other time period would be other than three years or all of the properties that are on the covenant. It it would seem to me it would end up being kind of arbitrary. So anyway, I've said what I need to say. I don't know about the rest of you, if you have any more questions or discussion, or if we should hear from the public.
I'd like to hear from the public.
Let's do that. Okay, so round two, or sorry, round one of public comment and questions. If there's anyone here from Lawson Hill or Aldosoro, we received your letters. And if you make your three minutes, you know, have your three minutes. But then if you could also help me understand what was meant, I'm I'm reading the Aldosoro letter here and they're very similar. But the county needs to be transparent and provide a clear policy outlining the different set of qualification and enforcement standards for each deed restriction. I just don't know what that means because in my mind, the qualifications are outlined in the deed restriction. So and and the enforcement happens by revisiting the deed restriction. But there's something in here I'm not understanding. So if Lawson and Aldosoro, who wrote those letters when it's their time to speak, could address that, that would be really helpful to me.
Shelley has her hand up.
Oh, do we just do that? Okay, Shelley, hi. If you'd like to unmute and also you can turn on your video if you'd like. Have we done what we need to on our end?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. Okay. You should be able to unmute and turn on your video if you'd like, Shelley.
Okay, hi, I I can't get my video to to turn on, but can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, commissioners, county staff, for this continued important conversation. I want to just address your your question real quick and about the kind of the list of the differences of qualifications and standards. I think that comes from all of the feedback that I've been getting from owners just having no clarity on the differences between the covenant, the land use code. It just kind of goes back to that original conversation where we don't know what those differences are. And that's like the number one question that I've been getting, and I haven't been able to answer it. And I and we really got some good clarity today as far as the differences in the presentation from Mara. And that was helpful to see that. And I think it's going to be helpful for for the community to look at that and and digest it and see what those differences are. And and enforcement standards, and I and I think that comes and relates to the policies of qualifications that the the regional housing authority during qualification processes on an annual basis. Like if you're under the land use code, you know, I think some of those qualification standards are maybe different than what the covenant requires. I I don't know. So that might be helpful to understand a little bit more. I so, but I think in general, I want to make some general comments on the presentation today.
Let's start restart her clock, if that's okay, since she just answered my question.
Okay.
Yeah, we're giving you the full three minutes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
You know, what I I really want to to express is and and focus a little bit on the development of the covenant and the reason for it back in 2010. And what I've been told from people that were involved originally, you know, probably starting back in 2008, owners that were very concerned about the amount of changes to the land use code prior to the covenant that were were happening and they wanted security. They wanted security, you know, so that they didn't have to be subject to continuous land use code changes that affected their home. So so the conversation started with the county saying, all right, let's come up with a covenant that gives us that security. And so in 2010 is is when that covenant was created. But what the elephant in the room is the fact that the county wasn't really allowed to make those changes to the land use code because the original plat subject to the, I think it was the 19, early 1992 land use code, had the provision in there that said that no changes could be made to the land use code without the permission of the landowner. And that was subsequently removed from the land use code in 2000. And so so those rights were removed. And they and so when the conversation started happening in the mid 2000s, you know, towards 2010, you know, the people at the time, they they didn't know any different that that right was taken away from them under that original plat. So I I don't, you know, even in the development of the of the covenant in the 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 slide today, where it talks about the purpose of that covenant, to ensure rules and regulations that apply to deed restricted properties could not be changed without owner's consent and would not evolve over time. But really, the county took that right away from all of those original plat land use code owners. Because that was removed, that language was removed from the land use code. I think it was in 2000 and it it was in my original letter. So so the whole premise of this, you know, 2010 covenant was like under false pretenses almost because the people thought they did, they didn't have a right. So anyway, I I just want you to take that into consideration as you are deciding on giving them, giving all owners the option to revert back to that original land use code because that was their right originally. So that's kind of all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak? Make a, if you would just please raise your hand or or stand up, that works too. Come on up and just please come to the microphone and introduce yourself.
I'm Laura Ellison. I do not own deed restricted housing. I am the Lawson Hill board member and I am a real estate professional. And so my frustration comes along the lines of I have great respect for what volunteers on boards do. And I understand the conversation you guys are having around intent. Intent is based on the person who's talking about their intent. It doesn't necessarily translate to the person that is receiving the end of that intent. And I think that might be where the conversation started when some people were trying to change the most recent land use or covenants with very good intent to continue to bolster up the deed restricted community and and the intent of the deed restrictions in the first place. But from the real estate perspective, I feel that that does not have it placed in this particular conversation. Because when somebody buys something, they should know what they're buying and they should be able to sell what they bought. And so I think that although I agree completely with, you know, we we want a certain type of person and we don't want the person who lives somewhere else and gets most of their income. I mean, the changes were necessary, were good, they were well intentioned. But were they appropriate at the time and in the way that they were done? And were they presented in an appropriate way to people that were purchasing? I personally have heard anecdotally that some people would be happy, as you two have done, to accept the restriction that they signed. They feel that it was well intentioned and you may find of the only 117 properties that you're talking about right now, that many people would agree with that. And I think that would be amazing and would bolster this community in terms of the purpose and process. I've also seen a document that at the very top of it in capital letters says you must sign this to close on your property, which clearly identifies that that a choice was not given at that point. So I think you guys have found a problem and I'm hoping that you will try to help fix it for for everybody. It's not, and it's and it's not a big change as you guys have have illustrated. The difference between the different restrictions isn't so great that it's such a horrible chasm that it's going to cause a huge problem in those 117 properties. But going forward, as you build the more than how many 700 properties that you need in this community, supposedly based on housing surveys and studies, you absolutely have to get it right going forward. But it is appropriate to then say that, you know, we found a problem here and we should do that because it was the right intent. Does that make any sense?
Some of it does.
It's just.
I have one question, the document that you referred to. I'm just curious if that was recent or if that was.
Sometime between 2010 and.
Well, and I don't think we're, I mean, I'm not surprised by that, Laura, because we understand now that that was how the deed restriction was being administered. And that is the reason we are talking about letting people, maybe even before 2022, in the time period that Annalise is speaking to, revert back. So I I feel like some of the things that you are are have concerns about, we are actually addressing right to here today.
Yes, and I know staff has recommended a three year timeframe. And I'm suggesting that that the the problem you found in the last three years pre-existence, those.
And I think that's why the the commissioners are are headed in that way. And and, okay, I'm sorry, we're going back and forth and we shouldn't be. Our bad. Thank you, Laura.
Thanks for that clarification. I had the same questions.
Okay. Damon, Demis, I think you were the next person online who raised their hand. So please unmute yourself and if you'd like to put on your video, we would love to see you.
It's actually Laney and Damon. Hi, everyone. I just wanted to thank Maura and Jared first and foremost for this incredible work. I mean, I've never seen it explained so clearly and simply. So thank you guys so much for taking the time to help us understand the issue. And it might be helpful as we, as you guys consider land use code or the last deed or the last covenant to to throw that slide back up as other people might want to discuss it. Because I didn't really see, after that slide went up and and commissioners, you guys were talking and debating and talking about, you know, the the gig worker or whatever. I didn't really see that it was that different. I mean, there are still restrictions, right, on the on the land use code about how many hours you have to, how many, how, I don't know if it's like a salary thing or how much money you have to make in this community versus outside of the community. I also understand and sympathize with this administrative challenge you have before you and whatever you do. You know, the folks at the housing authority have to deal with this. And so, you know, it might be easier to just offer people, go back to the land use code if that's what you want, unless I just didn't see in Maura's explanation that it was that much more restrictive and maybe I misunderstood.
We can revisit that, Laney, because I have had the same question repeatedly. And we can, we can revisit that slide as you suggested after we get through the other comments and questions.
Okay, well, just thank you guys for your time and for considering all of this. It's it's incredible amount of work, I understand, and just wanted to say thanks.
You're welcome. And thanks to Nancy Willis, to our paralegal, who did a lot of the the really detailed work that was able to be digested into this. Anyone else in the room before I go back? Lara?
Hi.
Please introduce yourself.
I'm Lara Young. I've lived in Telluride for 35 years. And I think everything to me is clear as mud, even after all the slides, all the presentations. And part of that is that I'm very thankful to Shelley, who's been working on the behalf of not just Aldosoro, but I feel like all of the deed restricted individuals, homeowners. And she's been requesting clarification for months and months and months. And I've been copied on all those emails. And there hasn't been clarification till this meeting and this slideshow. But it's still not clear to me. So there's the land use code, which was in 1994, is what she thought. And then that land use code stays and then there are covenants attached to that that different individuals have signed different covenants that make the land use code a little bit different. And so from my understanding is that all of this needs to, I mean, this is just like a quick AI gipity Google search is that there's procedures. And it's very clear to me that these weren't followed ever because Shelley wasn't notified, her predecessors weren't. I was never notified that I could sign a 2010 covenant. It's within. It's within our community, people feel that the two thousand and ten covenant is better than the original land use code. I don't know, because none of those documents have been shared with deed restricted homeowners or the HOAs like Shelley and I'm sure at Lawson. So it's not very clear to me. We, we bought our lot, lot in two thousand and five. And that's the only thing I've ever signed. And I'm of course concerned about myself, but I'm concerned about everyone. And I personally, I'm the furthest thing from a finance pro. But I take offense to that whole conversation in a public space like this. I found it offensive. For a lot of reasons. And one, say that I work as a teacher and my husband could no longer do construction work. And he got lucky and became able to work remotely. And his income increased to, so, so now let's say we're at four hundred thousand a year. We still couldn't buy a free market. And we've contributed to the community for thirty-five years. We've raised our children here. We've been on various boards. We volunteered a million hours. So I think that there are so many flaws where things are and the presentations are great. I appreciate everyone's work. I know everyone's heart is in the right place, but we cannot move forward in September and one month or two months or three months. It seems like there's so much work to be done. So many notices to be given so that the deed restriction is what it has been for our family. And it continues to be. And the intent, I don't, I, I, I'm just so confused and baffled by how we could move forward in September.
Thank you.
There's a lot of questions.
Thank you.
There's less than, I need more than three minutes. I'll be back.
Um, moving now to the next hand I see online, which is Matthew Legault. Did we lose him?
Everybody load is.
Oh, oh, hand is down. Okay. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak?
His hand is back.
Oh, Matthew's back. Come on back, Matthew.
Sorry, it wouldn't let me unmute myself.
We, we've got you now, Matthew.
So, um, the root problem I see here is the housing authority ignored the purpose of the covenant. They went down the road of trying to push and get away with as much as possible. And pushed a lot too far because they didn't like the limitations that they had to work within. If they had kept to the purpose, then they would have stayed as far away from possible for anything that could have been illegal. They just didn't want to do that. Um, in my instance, the SMRHA attorney hated me because I actually read the covenant and told her that I didn't have to do things she wanted me to do. And in retaliation for that, she changed the way that she would calculate our income seven different times. Um, just to try to make it so that we wouldn't qualify. And I know that they, way that she was calculating income was not applied to anyone else ever. This cost us like fifteen thousand dollars in legal fees, which is kind of ridiculous, um, just to be able to keep our home. Um, she obviously didn't care about that when she was doing it. Um, as far as moving forward, one thing I would like to propose is that you can always do things to encourage people to sign like a new covenant. So for example, instead of charging one percent sale fee, maybe you charge them a point nine percent sale fee. Or if somebody asked for an exception, that would be normally denied, but doesn't hurt the purpose of the covenant. You can always say, hey, if you sign a more restrictive covenant, we will give you this exception. There's a lot of ways and that's just a few of your options. It's entirely possible to accomplish the goals and follow a lot. It just takes a bit more work and creativity. Also, I'm, um, if the decision here takes a while, which is possible, um, I would say that it might be a good idea to waive the statute of limitations. If we're going to go down another six month process so that people who maybe are considering suing now that they know that they have that, these legal rights, don't feel like they have to do so in that period of time. Um, lastly, I know that there were people who were charged like non-compliance fees or had to pay for a fee for a hearing or otherwise. That was only necessary because the SMRHA interpretations were a bit of a moonshot, um, and off the wall. Um, and I would say that the county should consider refunding fees to people that were charged only because of, to be entirely frank, uh, interpretations of the covenant that are a little bit insane. Um, and that's pretty much my two cents.
Thank you, Matthew. Anybody else in the room? Dylan.
Hi, uh, I'm Dylan Brooks. Thank you, uh, for all the hard work that you guys have put into this and the attention. Really appreciate it. Um, I wanted to focus, uh, chiefly on the discussion about, uh, the difference between requiring that, uh, our deed restricted housing is available for people who work here and this arbitrary standard that, yeah, you put on our staff of determining whether their work requires them to be here. It ties into, uh, what I think some people take offense to and referring to tech bros and other people living in affordable housing that don't deserve to because they don't work in our community. We, I think we have this habit of addressing problems that don't exist and, and, and talking about the theoretical problems. You're, you're, what, what I've, what I've seen with these new covenants and new compliance is, uh, a lot more paperwork, a lot more headache for, uh, folks like Matthew. And, um, not a real improvement in who our neighbors are or in availability. Um, I, I, I would challenge the staff to look at our more restrictive covenants and our less restrictive and see if there is a big price difference. Um, you know, because that seems to be the implication that somehow if somebody made millions in crypto and then they move here that, uh, um, you know, we want to make sure they don't buy into affordable housing. Um, in my experience, they're not doing that. Nor are the day traders buying into affordable housing. Uh, my, my neighborhood and many like them are filled with regular working people. And it's working. And there seems to be an, an ongoing effort as we see, you know, the last couple of decades to continue to mess with something that's working. Where, uh, where, from my perspective, the time and energy should be focused on more housing. More housing, like, like forcing the size of that. Forcing the price down, uh, if, if any of us happen to resell, isn't creating more housing. That's taking some money out of our pockets. Okay, great. But you didn't create more housing by doing that. The way that you lower prices is more supply. We need more affordable housing. More energy needs to be spent on that. And we need to spend less of our time and energy on going through compliance hurdles. And, you know, as, as a self-employed business owner in particular, whether I was doing crypto or day trading or doing what I do. You know, the fact that I'm self-employed makes it so much harder to comply. If I'm getting a W two from somebody else, it doesn't matter. I could be running a day trading operation, hiring thirty people. All thirty of them are, are eligible. Because they're, they have a W two and they have to show up to that office. It doesn't matter that it's day trading or crypto or anything else.
Thank you, Dylan.
Your solution doesn't work right now. I, it is a problem. Um, but it, but it's not a big problem. That's what I got. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And, um, just, I don't, I can't remember when you came in, but, um, we do plan to address the policies that, um, the regional housing authority, um, is using for compliance. It's just not part of this conversation. We recognize that's a problem.
Yeah, I, I did listen to all of that and followed it. It was just easier to see the slides from my office.
Okay.
And I appreciate you're going to, but part of the conversation is if you have a bunch of people going to the less restrictive old LUCs, that you're going to have more people who are exempt from this fiscal presence requirement. And I, 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 I heard a reaction that that is necessarily a bad thing and I have not seen it proven that that is a bad thing.
Thank you.
That's what I got.
Okay, um, next in the room. Hello, please. Yeah, I don't see anybody online. Thank you though.
Um, Annalisa Rebo. I know, not going to go through the resume again, thirty years.
And you work for a title company?
I, yeah, I own Alpine Title.
Yeah.
Um, and I've worked with Lawson Hill and I, I live in Mountain Village deed restricted property. Um, I take offense at two basic things that happened here today. One was the basic premise of Jared's graph. I'm not entirely certain that that reflected if you were to do, um, actual research on, um, statistics that that proved what he said it was proving. However, if it does, it definitely showed that reverting people to the LUC wasn't going to increase the property value. So I don't think I get, I echo what Brooks is saying. We're spending a lot, much ado about nothing. Um, I'm going to echo what Laura said. Private property rights are key and I think wasting money on lawsuits and not building more affordable housing would be insane. Um, the other thing, I also took great offense to the tech bro comment because I don't know a whole lot of tech bros and not a lot of people that work either part or full-time in some sort of remote capacity. And, um, they all definitely contribute to the economic landscape here. They eat out here. They tend to work part-time here because they also work part-time online. And I would not want to force them to prove that they earn a certain percentage of their income supplying that part-time work. And I can tell you, one who might not qualify under that, who has as many children as I do contributing in those jobs, those entry level jobs. Many of our other family members, either it's a family member who's a teacher, a family member that's a waitress or a family member who's loading people onto ski lifts. Because one earns part of their income outside of the community because they're able to work remotely. The others in the family are able to provide those other ancillary services that I believe was probably part of the intent of the original deed restriction. We need people to supply that type of labor. Um, I think that's pretty much it, but I'm going to go over my notes, um. Nope, that's it. And thank you very much for all your time.
Thank you, Annalisa. All right, anybody else online? Nope. Anybody in the room? Jenny Gordon.
Hi, my name is Jenny Gordon. I'm a property owner in Lawson Hill, both commercial property and a little work property. And thank you so much for all the work that you're doing. I think what most people are feeling is overwhelmed with this topic. I date back to the two thousand and ten covenant, starting in two thousand and eight, creating it, working to create it with the county and legal council, um, in HOAs. And at the time, I think it was stated that we did it because we couldn't rely on the LUC. We've now determined that the LUC should have been the document that we could have relied on. Um, from a legal perspective, I don't know how you can do anything to protect yourself and to protect your housing authority, but revert, allow everyone to revert. And I understand the problems with the LUC. The two thousand and ten covenant is really not something that you should be afraid of letting everybody refer to. I'm assuming, and this is a question, anyone who is purchasing now, let's say in Lawson Hill, are they being offered the two thousand and ten covenant? Um, and will they be once you make that decision? Will, will everyone be able to pick that two thousand and ten covenant? Or the LUC, the nineteen ninety-one LUC? I understand the complications and why you don't like that. But i- if we don't get everyone on the same page, I don't know how you're ever going to fix this mess. So if everyone is allowed to revert to, let's say, just, let's talk the covenant, the two thousand and ten covenant. And some people do and some people don't. When the new people buy those properties, they'll be offered the two thousand and ten covenant. There isn't anything else that will be offered other than whatever you decide on the LUC. So over a period of time, your staff will end up with more and more people on the same document. And what you're suggesting now still leaves you with this incredible mess of who's on what and how are we going to implement it? What policies, procedures are we going to use? And it seems to me that although it's unfortunate where we are, you guys are honestly addressing the problem. I really appreciate that. But until you get everybody much more closely aligned on the same page, so all the Lawson people, you know what they're on, all of the, um, Two Rivers, you know what they're on and your staff can implement that. And if you do anything else and keep this segregation happening based on three years, ten years or whatever, you're never going to get to a manageable situation and you're leaving yourself open to a lot of legal, potential legal problems.
Thank you, Jenny. All right, um, no one else online? Anyone else in the room? I think we've heard from all but one. You're good. Okay. Um, I think we are ready now to close this first round of public comment and go, um, back to any response or comments that staff or commissioners might want to make. Was there anything you felt like you could respond to now that, that, um, one of the commissioners didn't already respond to? I'm looking at our staff.
Um, I guess just to the question I was just asked, would we offer the two thousand and ten covenant to new buyers? My recommendation would be no. If someone doesn't, if, if you decide to provide the option to revert to everyone and they don't take it, a future buyer is offered the current covenant.
Where they're offered the one that is with the property or the current covenant. They are not offered.
This would be a one-time offer to go back to an old version of the covenant that the county has effectively stopped using to try and remedy these concerns.
That would be my sort of interpretation of that option as well. Anybody up here have a, anything else to say about that? Jared?
I was, I was just going to add commissioners, to, to be crystal clear. The options that are being offered, if I walk into that office today and try to qualify, I will be offered the deed restriction that applies to whatever property I'm trying to qualify for now. Or the two thousand and twenty-three covenant, which is the approved covenant for use today. And so there, there has been no change in operation other than to absolutely ensure people understand they have an option.
Right. And I think for those people, like, say somebody was buying my house right now, they would be offered the two thousand and sixteen covenant or the two thousand and twenty-three covenant, because I'm on the two thousand and sixteen. Um, but I think there was a question raised about for those people who are kind of in, in buying and selling right now, would they also be offered whatever option we provide? And I would think yes. If we decide to have everybody go back to land use code covenant, whatever, that those people, since they're kind of in this in-between area, would be included in the group that we would extend that to. Does anybody disagree with that? Or is I, it's clear as mud, as Lara said.
I think that's a direction question that we'd be looking for. Obviously, we'd put forth that date. I think it was June first of this year, but in the intervening month and a half or until you make a final decision. If you instruct, uh, us and the housing authorities to offer that reversion, then that's what will be done.
Oh, okay, I see. So you, the three years was not uh, June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two till whenever we make this decision. It was till for three years.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if, if I may add, you know, we, we have been darn sure that everybody has received an option since, I believe, January. And so we, you know, that's something to weigh in your decision that you know, we would be, we have been doing and doubling. we have been doing and doubling down, making sure we are doing what we will do in the next year, in the next five years, unless there's a change in reversion.
Clarification, which land use code are you offering people?
We're offering them, um, they're staying. Oh, go ahead, Jared.
Uh, if a property is currently on a version of the land use code.
Any version.
They, they are being offered that same version of the land use code. So if, to tomorrow's point, the plat notes, if, if I buy in Lawson Hill and the plat note was codified in nineteen ninety-four, that would be the version I would be qualifying under. Um, and I would have that or the twenty-twenty-three covenant. Um, and I, I agree with Ms. Gordon, you know, there will be a timeout effect, but that timeout effect may be, I, I hope I'm retired at that point in time. But, but it will be, you know, a long time uh before. We, we thought about this a lot. We said, if we offer one thing, if we offered everybody to go back to nineteen ninety-one, we'll still have a lot of people who don't take it. And we will have to administer both of these systems anything.
Uh huh.
And so that was some of our thought and, and we've kind of posed that and said, well, it's not to say it's a bad idea, it's just to say it's not going to save us administrative ways.
No. Lance?
I'm going to try to synthesize um Elani's and Dylan's um concerns and questions about the difference between the land use code and the covenant.
Can you put that slide back up?
I mean, if you put that slide back up, I'd like to start with trying to um remind us all, but Elani in particular, of that difference. And Shelley, I think we're headed towards your elephant in the room question here, and I'm not forgetting that. So here comes the chart that has the definition of employee versus land use code versus covenant. And the source of income might be the biggest place that we're trying to knuckle down on here. And under the land use code, it's primarily in the R one school district, which isn't really defined and very difficult. And that has created a lot of requests for exceptions or at least discussion about what is primary. And then the covenant is somewhat more clear, requires physical presence in the R one school district um or requires presence to provide goods and services. It eventually gets to fifty percent of your qualifying income, which is the next slide, I believe.
No, I think it's above.
Was it above?
Yeah, right, that there, item C in the box right above.
Thank you. Um, I will not see what you're seeing, but I want to, I want to talk.
There's three points in the covenant employee and it's A, B, and C.
Okay.
Point C and covenant.
Thank you. Um, that's the one. Household non-qualifying, qualifying income, this is on the covenant side, point C, does not exceed qualifying income. And s- the difference between qualifying and non-qualifying is whether you make it in the R one school district or out of the R one school district. So Elani, that's really the distinction that the commissioners were talking about earlier. I did not mean to offend by um using any of the terminology or job descriptions that I meant. What I was trying to avoid was the kind of wonky term of remote worker or um location nonspecific worker, which felt so governmental. But I can certainly apologize for using terms that I didn't intend to offend anybody. And I said it as I spoke them, there, there's no shade on any of those professions. But I will say that it's hard to get a plumber here, it's important to have school teachers, and that for someone who is non-location specific, in many cases, perhaps not in Dylan's case, but in many cases, you could do your work almost anywhere in the country, almost anywhere on the planet. And you wouldn't need to be living in housing that has been publicly funded and is, in my mind, really hopefully set up for folks that are in some sense connected to the community um through their work as well as through their community and civic duties. And Lara, I totally understand that if Mike retires and gets a great gig doing something remotely, I want that for you, I want that for him. Um, put down the hammer, Mike, it's okay. You're good at what you do, but I'm sure you're good at other things. That's not the point. The point is from a community perspective, from a regional perspective, the more people that we have to have driving up from other communities to do the things that we need to have done here, whether it's serving coffee, bumping chairlifts, and I'm just picking some of the low-hanging, easy, obvious fruit. Um, if there's not room for them because we have folks that are able to do their work anywhere else on the planet, really, but are living in the housing that we've tried to create for the folks that make the electricity and the plumbing and the school and the library work, I think we've done ourselves a disservice. Dylan, you may be right. It may be this is all a tempest in a teapot and that it's not going to be a big issue and only two people are going to revert back to the land use code out of the possible eighty-eight or a hundred and seventeen. We don't know. But if I'm trying to guard the hen house a little bit, I have to be cognizant that you might be right or my worst fears could happen and I could lose a hundred and seventeen units or eighty-eight units or whatever decision we end up making to the next wave of buyers. Not us that we all know and love, not our neighbors that live here that we care about and have history with. But the next wave could be folks that qualify but aren't necessarily working in the community in order to make the bulk of their income. And we lose folks that are fixing our pipes and running our schools and working as EMTs and all the things that make communities function. So that's my conundrum. I'm not sure who's right yet. I'm still listening. But I hope that helped you, Elani, and it takes me back to Shelley. I'm sorry to speak for so long, but I'm trying to tie together some of the really key points I heard here. Um, Shelley, you may be right. I don't know. Um, I wasn't around, I wasn't involved when those documents were changed. Don't know the history. I know that you've got um a really good nose for research and I appreciate that. And I have read every single one of your letters, but I'm not sure that I can fix the primary elephant in the room problem that you spoke to without risking the problem that I was just mentioning for the last five or so minutes. Um, and I'm unclear how to proceed yet, still trying to sort it out. I'll stop talking and listen some more.
Um, just for clarification, I wanted to try at least to make the mud a little bit more clear for Lara as far as through the years, you know, as this has, as the deed restrictions have evolved. You know, what, when did you say you bought your place again? Sorry, I know we're not supposed to back in. Two thousand and five, right? At that point, the covenant had not been established. And so as a home buyer at that moment in time in history, you would have been offered the existing deed restriction with that property. You, and that is kept in place in perpetuity until the, the ownership changes hands. At that point, and I think one of the things we're really trying to remedy right now that went wrong is that there was an era there where people weren't clearly given the option to stay on that existing deed restriction that carried with the land, carried with the ownership, um, or what was in place and stated by the county at that moment in time in history. Is, does that mean, I hope that clarifies things. So there, there, you can't kind of just like pick a place and time and be like, oh, wait, but I want to take advantage or disadvantage, however you perceive it, of the covenant that is put into place any given year. I want to be on that now. Like, that's just, that's not how it works. And I, I, I'm not totally clear on if that was where you were confused, but I, I just wanted to kind of make that statement that that's how it works.
But it was, none of this information is readily available. Shelley has requested it for over a year. The different covenants.
Lara, right now, nobody can barely, if you want to speak, at least you come to a microphone.
Okay. Sorry, she was.
And I, I'm kind of asking you a question.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's not do the back and forth, but I do, I do hear you, Lara, that um perhaps there are some documents that weren't provided. I don't know. Um, I'm, I'm surprised by that because we have core requests and we have a staff that's spending the bulk of their time on this, so um let's sort that out after this meeting with Shelley if we could.
Yeah, but I.
And I also think with Lara that um, that maybe, well, okay, yeah, we were trying to help her understand.
Kind of clear to the public of like, how this process works.
Yeah.
Right? And what is available to any given homeowner buying into the deed restricted housing market at any given time? How that works and maybe where some mis, where some missteps were taken and what we are trying to remedy at this moment to do right by the community.
Thank you for clarifying that. And Lara, if it's not clear still, then any one of us is happy to sit with you and try to address it more directly um or more specifically to your questions. Mora?
And I'll just say, I, I think we mentioned this at the June meeting, but we are, well, any of the covenant templates easily readily available. Um, those are singular documents that we can produce. Um, we are working on figuring out how to best communicate, compile and communicate the different iterations of the land use code. That is something we don't currently have complete versions for each year or round of provisions, but we are trying to get that in a state where we can.
People can reference it and know that if they are on the land use code, that this is the version they're on.
Yes, with the asterisk that any subsequent less restrictive amendments would be applied per the land use code. And those are, I don't think we have a.
Yeah.
An easy way to compile that into a single document.
Okay.
This is the, the issue of the land use code really at its core is.
I thought that last, okay, maybe clarify for me, because I thought at the last meeting, um, you had said that there was a project in process, which was trying to memorialize each version of the land use code and that wouldn't, okay, so the issue is.
So the way, so the land use code is written in the nineties. It had that provision that said it shall not be changed or may not be changed without owner consent unless it is less restrictive.
Right.
So less restrictive changes that have been made over time.
Right.
Reply, uh, apply.
All the way back.
Actively, essentially.
Right.
So even if your plat note was applied in nineteen ninety-four, a less restrictive change that was made in two thousand would apply.
So couldn't we just have a list? Couldn't we just have a list of all of the changes that were made something less restrictive? And say, no matter what land use code you're, you were under when you purchased your home, these also apply to you?
In theory, but I think determining what is actually less restrictive is subject to interpretation.
Well, that.
Because a lot of the changes were procedural or things that apply to the county.
Well, then.
So determining.
I, I would suggest that our legal team just use their best, um, you know, common sense and legal knowledge to make that call. And if people want to question that work, then they can go back and argue that point. But we have to give people something, I think, who are on the land use code or who may revert back to the land use code, if that's an option, to understand what that is. No?
Yeah, and I think that's something we're trying to do. It's just how to clearly communicate.
Okay.
That, because some provisions were changed.
Multiple times.
Multiple times.
Yep. Um, okay, and I don't think procedural things that don't impact the um requirements for ownership need to be included in that. I think it's just anything that changes who would qualify or how um somehow needs to be documented. I mean, am I, am I asking for too much?
Generally, the land use code has not been made less restrictive over time when it comes to who you, who qualifies.
Right, 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 okay. So there probably aren't a whole lot of changes to the land use code that are less restrictive that actually impact how someone or who or how they qualify. So it might be a short list.
It could be a short list, but a long lead.
I know. Yeah.
Um, I think what, I hope everyone's taking away that's listening, joining us and pondering this is that we've inherited a big ball of wax and we're trying to unsnarl it. And we want to do the right thing and we're not quite sure yet how to do it. I'm looking at the clock.
Uh huh.
I know that it's been a full day of meetings for most all of us at some level. And I'm not sure if we want to try to get to a decision this season, as Jared requested, or if we need to defer that and continue to take public input for a little longer and then spend a little time sleeping on, so to speak.
Okay, um, I would like to make a decision tonight if we can. I don't know how you all are feeling or where you're leaning, but to the point that got applause in the room, I feel like we have put so many hours into this. I feel like as a commissioner, I am very well informed about the um issues behind us, what was done wrong, what wasn't done wrong and what our options are. So I feel ready to have that discussion and make the decision. Um, I don't know if the other commissioners feel like they need more information from staff or more input from the public. Um, if you do, then of course we can continue this, but it's just more time and another session and more people coming back. And I don't think, yeah, so please let me know how, where you feel about, how you feel about that.
I'd like to hear from the Monis around pony because I see you're in hand up.
Okay.
I'd like to hear from the Demus family because.
Okay, but can you leave that slide up there? Because actually I did want to clarify that. What I'm saying is I'm not ready to go home yet and, okay, are you guys? Yeah, okay.
As long as we need.
Okay.
Hash out what we need to this evening.
Okay.
Right.
So, yeah, so let's do that. Let's, I have one point I wanted to make on this slide and then a couple other points I wanted to address. And then we'll take our second round of public comment and then we'll see if we feel ready to have a discussion and make a decision. Okay. So the other thing on this slide that I, took me a long time to sink in is the employee row where the land use code define, you know, describes an employee as such. But that's only one person in the house. That's only for the qualifying person. And the difference with the covenant is they take into account the whole household. And that's where, for example, if you had under the land use code, uh, you know, uh, two partners or two people buying the property together and one made six hundred and fifty thousand dollars doing whatever they do remotely and one person lived here serving coffee, making twenty dollars an hour, that person making twenty dollars an hour would qualify and anybody else could live in the household. Under the covenant, again, the whole household is taken into consideration. And that is, I think, a very important and um a qual, a point and one that I would like to see um going, you know, oh, adhere to going forward, because I do have concerns about the remote worker. I do, making that money. So that, and now I'll go to the Demus's because that was their question and um their hand is raised. So.
Okay, so, yes, uh, yep, can you guys hear me? I'm, I'm not going to put my video on because I want to keep this slide on and I don't know if that's going to mess that up. So thanks for putting this slide back up. Um, I think the big difference between these two, aside from what Anne just, just um mentioned, is that uh, the covenant has a um, uh, has a residency um history. Yeah, you have to have been here for eight to twelve months prior. The land use code does not. It just says that you have to earn your living primarily in the R one school district thirty hours a week. The hours are the same. It, I think the hours on the land use code are actually higher than the covenant if you do the math. So what the land use code does for the community, just something to think about, is kind of a recruiting tool, if you will, for school teachers or people at the med center or whatever. Like, you're trying to hire someone, they want to buy a house, they don't have the twelve months history, so they would not qualify, whereas under the land use code, they would. That's something, just something to think about. Um, which is kind of a big deal, actually, not, you know, now that I'm realizing that's what it says. The other thing I've heard about the land use code is that the enforcement of the land use code is problematic because there aren't like policies or there's no uh procedural um issues in there that, that allow the San Miguel Regional. um, issues in there that, that allow the San Miguel Regional Housing Authority to actually enforce it. And I don't know if that's true, if, or if that was just kind of a rumor, but that's one thing is the enforcement of land use code. Because if you, if you, if you don't have a mechanism to enforce it, then obviously it becomes kind of moot and everybody, everybody's running amok with, with where they live and, and the qualifications. Um, so I guess that's all I wanted to say. I mean, I like that part of the land use code for sure because then people who are working, you know, who are critical workers could qualify and would not under a covenant. Because you gotta do, you gotta sort of pay your dues for the eight to twelve months prior. And the physical, the physical presence, I get exactly what you guys are saying. I totally get it. It's like, do you have to be here to do your job? You know, but to Dylan's point, you could be living in the community significantly, you know, you could be contributing to the community in many other ways. You don't really need to be here, but you're, you know, you are making your living here. So I sympathize with that um, that uh, argument as well. I guess that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, anyone else in the room? Laura, we'll go back and forth between room and online. Can you come up to a microphone, please?
If you get, if you give me pause that, that in starting this conversation again, the first thing you go to is a specific piece that you want to preserve and keep involved going forward. Every one of us could probably identify one thing in each of the covenants or each of the land use codes revisions that seems like it's the best idea possible. But you stated that this conversation isn't about administering it. Let's leave that to another date. This conversation is about whether all of it was applied correctly or not at that time, whatever it was. And going back to try to make sure that it, everybody was given the correct option. My understanding that the twenty ten covenant, I think it was the twenty ten, was written to solve some very real problems with the original. And I do think there are a lot of people that wouldn't be able to stay in their house perhaps if they can't have that and would opt for that. But they have to give, be given the informed decision to do it. And whether we like provision, you know, um, requires a physical presence, or we like primary residence in the four corners versus R one is kind of not germane to the particular.
I hear you. I hear you.
All I'm saying right now is let's keep it to how was it done wrong? And let's allow everybody to make an informed decision.
Understand.
Thank you.
Um, uh, Damon Demus, you might want to take your hand down unless there's a different person in the room wants to speak. Um, Melissa RAM, you are next up.
Um, hello. Uh, Melissa here, um, resident for twenty-five years and in Lawson Hill for twenty. I am on Timberline Court. And we purchased our house in May twenty, uh, May two thousand five from Sally Jones, the original owner. And when we were all at the closing, my land use code that I signed, that I still have easily accessible here at the house, um, it is one page with about ten rules. And that's it. And uh, she got the, she's the original house owner from nineteen ninety-two. And I just, um, I have a question whether that one sheet with about those ten rules, if that is still what is applicable to me and others in that um, situation today? Because it was always my understanding that uh, whatever rules changed, it would just be added on to that. And if, if that's incorrect and the land use code that I have and that I signed, that is one simple, simple page. If, if that is still what's being debated on whether folks can go back to that, it wouldn't be so much reading unless I have something really different than everybody else. Mine looks like it could have been torn out of a coloring book. We all signed it. There's like ten simple, simple rules that I have and I have all my documentation. So I just, I'm happy to offer that to the board as um, an original document from two thousand five from um, that, that from a house from nineteen ninety-two, one of the originals here in Lawson Hill. So I just wanted to offer that.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Mora?
I just want to respond to that because I feel like that point has been, has come up a few times that if your property is on the land use code, the deed restriction refers to the sections of the land use code in their entirety. Select provisions have been excerpted out for reprinting on that deed restriction, but that doesn't mean that's the entirety of the land use code deed restriction. So people will see a much shorter document, but
It's really a summary.
One land use code is fifteen pages long and that's everything that would apply. Because it generally, the land use code deed restrictions refer to those two sections, five thirteen oh four and five thirteen oh five. And the entirety of those sections is what is the land use code deed restriction.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
So I signed a summary. Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
I signed a summary. Okay, that wasn't made clear other than that, that the note.
Um, Melissa, if you have further questions about your particular document, I would ask you to contact the legal department, you know, tomorrow or whenever you can. Um, but I think we've, we need to move on from that question. But thank you for your kind offer. I really appreciate it. Um, we're back in the room with um, Lara Young.
Hi. So um, you're talking about giving staff direction. And just in our little discussion, trying to um, glean what um, Shelley's been asking for in an email that she sent me today. She said, the oldest version of the LUC I have is nineteen ninety-eight. Attached to this email, the county has yet to provide an analysis on the differences between the various LUCs and related amendments. I've asked for it in my most recent email again. Um, so it seemed like you both had some confusion when asking um, legal about the differences with the LUCs. And so I guess if I was on, I want this to be wrapped up and I want us to create more housing for everybody. But it seems that that might be impossible without getting some more information from legal for you all to make a decision. And then I also feel um, that giving, not allowing everyone to revert to um, the earlier versions, you just are creating inequity in a small community of hardworking, local deed restricted homeowners who are contributing to the community. Many of those same people have third generation living here now. So um, I know that I'm protected, given my date when I signed. And I also, I mean, Dylan said it brilliantly. It's, it's, I don't see problems with the LUC. I do see problems with all the different covenants and no one truly having all the documents and all of it condensed and understood. And I'm a little unclear. Maybe someone can clarify. So if your non-qualifying income is greater than your qualifying income, then you could lose your house.
Correct.
And that to me is not acceptable. I mean, that's clearly not our situation. What? Oh, I know. I'm not worried about myself. I'm worried about everyone else. As I think everyone in this room should be. Because say I lived here for thirty-five years and then suddenly my husband is making more money remotely and he's gonna, we're gonna lose our house and we're not going to continue to be a teacher. We're not going to continue to contribute to the community. So there are a lot of problems in the, in the covenants. And I, like I said, no one intent, no one's intent here is anything but to um, I think, create safe, secure employee housing. But the way things are set up now, it's not equitable and there's a lot of, of confusion and pain.
Four more times.
Okay, um, Caitlin Orintas, Orintas is online with her hand up. You should be able to unmute yourself now. Caitlin, I think you've unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Caitlin, do you want to call my cell and I'll hold you up to the speaker?
Oh, that's nice, Lance. If you, you want to give her your number?
She's gone.
Okay, you know her, okay. Oh, we lost her. Maybe she'll come right back. Um, anyone else in the room?
Commissioners, can I just make an important point, qualifying or clarifying point on that question that was just asked? So that, this standard is what is required to qualify to purchase the home. So that non-qualifying income threshold is for what you need to show for your employment at the time you are qualifying to buy the home. There is separately a continued to be a qualifying owner of the home. There's a continuing residence standard or a continuing employment standard. And those have additional factors. Which reading my notes does not have that threshold requirement. It's that you maintain your employment in the R one school district. So that non-qualifying qualifying income threshold is to qualify to purchase the house in the first instance.
So I was wrong, Lara. There's a different uh, provision for requalifying or continuing to qualify.
Yeah, you have to maintain your employment, meaning that physical presence requirement. Um, or there's other standards for if you are retired of a certain age and worked in the community for a certain number of years. You're a spouse of a qualified owner. There's a number of factors. But the, the criteria changes once you're in the house as an owner.
That's reassuring.
There's a lot of people back there who don't feel that.
Just one second, because um, um, Annalisa, we had somebody online with their hand up. Just one second.
So that's different for the twenty twenty-three covenant. The twenty twenty-three covenant has the household qualifying income threshold as the continuing employment standard. But for the earlier covenants, the continuing employment standard is based on the hours that you've worked.
In the R one school district. Okay. Thank you. Um, Caitlin Orintas is back. Can you unmute yourself? She co-hosts? Do you have to make her co-host again? There you are.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yay, thank you. Thankfully our days, I'm a little rusty on Zoom and that's a good thing. So um, I just, I wanted to speak to your hope to make a decision tonight. Um, because there's something that piqued my interest in listening to this conversation that I hadn't heard before. And that was Shelley's point that the changes that were made, I think she may have said in two thousand ten, were illegal to have been made in the first place. Um, and I haven't really heard if anyone's been able to clarify if that is in fact true. Um, and before you proceed, it would be nice to know if that is true. Um, so I just want to caution you to make a decision without that information.
Hmm, um, okay. Well, that's on my list to address as well, Caitlin. We'll come back to that after the end of this public comment period.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, Annalisa Rubel, you are back for your second round.
Rebel?
Rebel, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, whatever covenant you guys want to use on units for, on new units of deed restricted property, I think that's great. Taking away rights in the past, I think is wrong. Um, specifically to Lara and probably Melissa's point, um, because I was probably at that closing. Um, Lara's twenty, twen- two thousand five LUC that she signed, I would want to look back at it because I had an in-depth conversation with Maura about this. And um, words are really important to me. I think that probably my emotion last time I sat here a few minutes ago, that was probably pretty obvious. Um, though, I'm gonna say the same thing. As amended has come up. And in my conversation with Maura, that came up. So if somebody signed something that said as amended, she is your legal counsel was saying she was gonna hold them to that. And that's a little different than this conversation we're having here. So if we're talking about the original deed restriction that applied to the land, whether somebody, an intervening owner, signed something that said as amended, I, or, or maybe the words as amended weren't inserted in a particular acknowledgement of deed restriction or covenant that was signed over time. I think it's inequitable because I don't think people were reading those documents that clearly and understanding. I mean, obviously people that bought property did not understand that. And I think you should treat everyone the same.
Thank you. Matthew Legault, online.
Hi. Um, so one thing someone said earlier was that we need more housing in regards to the more restrictive rules. One thing I want to bring up, I nearly had to evict a renter of a room in my home because of the additional restrictions in the twenty twenty-three covenant, because of that additional income requirement that they were imposing against me. Um, that was one of the things. And I don't see how taking away housing is actually helping anything at all in this entire endeavor. That seems completely counterproductive. And when I went to the board and asked for an exception because it made no sense to me, I was told, tough, get over it, kick people out, which boggles my mind. Um, that's just one thing I wanted to point out with more restrictive rules could actually be worse for the goals we're trying to create here.
Thank you. All right, anybody else in the room? You can have one, you can have one more minute. Please open the microphone.
It was, it was stated that um, your non-qualifying income would not come into play later. I have literally seen it. He just reminded me of someone whose situation changed. And they had a situation where their roommate's rent suddenly exceeded their income because they had a situation where they're, they were making less money and they were forced to sell their home. And that is the way the staff anyway, has been enforcing it for decades. So.
Thank you for sharing that not good situation. Um, okay. Okay.
Is it the person who's titled, want to speak? Oh, yeah, don't, it's not her name.
Okay, want to speak. Um, so you are now able to unmute. Please introduce yourself. And I am going to schedule a bio break here in a minute after we get through the public comment before we come back. Um, want to. Want to Speak, don't know how to raise my hand. You should be able to unmute yourself now.
Maybe we should give some coaching on unmuting.
Unmuting, bottom left, where it says audio, there might be a red line through that, your very bottom left corner. If you click on that, it should unmute you. While you work on that, feel free to interrupt us at any time that you are able. I have one more comment in the room. Ginny Gordon, did you, if you want to, please come to the microphone.
I just wanted to give a little more clarity on the 2010 covenant. The impetus was the fear of continually changing LUC requirements. That's been made clear. I think what hasn't been mentioned is that the covenant also put a lot of things in writing that were not in the LUC. And that had to do with, as I recall, I'm not sure I'm exact, but retirement, leaves of absence for education, leaves of absence for medical for your family. There were quite a number of things that were put in to the covenant that would give clarity to people to how they could continue to live and yet have life experiences that might require some kind of situational change in their, in their housing for an interim period of time. So there was really a good reason when we did it that we thought people would come in droves and sign this 2010 covenant. We never expected to see the changes that have occurred. And it was only when some of this became more known in 2020 rendition that all of a sudden we realized that this was not running with the land and that there were changes being made that were very surprising. And then that's when this kind of all blew up a little bit. But there were really good reasons why we thought people would sign it, and we were very surprised when people didn't. But it has a lot to do with people just not understanding the complexity of all of this. And no matter what we do, we're going to have that same problem all over again. And it's going to require some community meetings, some real clear explanations of what they have now that they could keep and what they could expect to gain by going backwards in time. But there were some really strong reasons why the covenants gave a lot of additional power to the people, so to speak. So just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Ginny. Okay. Is there anybody else online? We are getting ready to close public comment. Laura, you have spoken twice. Is this your final comment?
Yeah.
Please come up to the microphone.
I was just going to say that if you guys do choose to take the position of going back to those 117, if that's the correct number of people. You know, I think you have a partner in Lawson Hill that would be willing to help you to discuss and educate, talk about the changes and differences and the options and try to help get you to the end game of where you want to go. We're already doing that. And we would encourage you with trying to be a partner and helping to educate people and make everybody capable of.
Understanding.
Understanding the decisions.
Thank you.
So that was all I was going to say.
Appreciate that. Okay. So question for the other commissioners, would you like to take a quick break? Or would you like to address the final kind of questions and comments that came up before taking a break?
I'm kind of floating right now. I could use a break for the bathroom for like five minutes.
Yeah, I'd like to use the ladies' room too. Okay.
Let's take five.
Let's take five. It's 7:45. Let's come back at, yeah, we'll come back in five minutes, but we'll make that a firm five. Thanks. Okay, it is 10:50. We are back from our five-minute leg-stretching bio break. And at this point, we have closed our second round of public comment. There are a few comments that came up that I would like to ask staff to address. And maybe I would maybe comment on myself, and I imagine others would as well. The first one is regarding, again, the documents that have been requested and evidently not delivered. Again, let's make sure that happens after this meeting. I find it hard to believe that our staff hasn't been cooperative. If that is the case, please let one of the commissioners know, and we will try to figure out what's going on for you. But, you know, there is no withholding of information happening here, certainly with intent. That was one thing I wanted to say. I also wanted to address Caitlin's follow-up to Shelley Duplan's comment that the changes made, I think she said in the 2010 covenant, no, sorry, I think it was in the 2000 changes to the land use code, where we took away the provision that the land use code could only be amended with the consent of the, of the property owner. I don't think that's illegal because we've established that the persons, when a person buys a property, they're on the land use code. They were always on from the beginning. And so while a future property, again, not a property buyer, but a future property under the land use code would not have that provision in it, anybody on the original land use code would. Did I, can you help explain that better than I did, Maura? Or maybe differently?
Maybe I'll explain it differently.
That's, that would be even better.
From our, our current interpretation of the land use code, which admittedly has changed since the historic interpretation. The removal of that provision in 2000 or 2001, where it said changes cannot be made without owner consent. In my view, the removal of that provision had no effect whatsoever on
Right.
old land use code properties, current new land use code properties. Because still, under our interpretation, when a property is deed restricted, it is deed restricted based on the conditions on the day it was deed restricted. So whether the land use code has that provision in it or not, it can't be changed. That individual property's deed restriction cannot be changed to be more restrictive without owner consent.
Thank you for clarifying that. Jared?
I, I wanted to, I guess additionally, because I think it was said that, and Shelley may be able to clarify for us, that the 2010 covenant was, I guess, the reason that people would adopt it was based on a farce or based on bad information.
I think false pretenses was the term.
And thereby was illegal. And to that case, I think that there are changing opinions. But nobody, you know, there are a number of reasons people selected, as Ms. Gordon pointed out, that 2010 covenant, for clarity, for a number of other reasons. One of them may have been because they thought the land use code would change. But nobody has actually come and challenged that. We may receive a challenge and we will deal with that then. But I don't think we've done anything illegal or that would not stand and wouldn't keep us from making a decision today.
I, I was going to address that point in a, not, in an additional way, which is that anybody who felt like they were forced to sign the 2010 covenant or forced or under false pretenses because they thought that they were subject to a changing land use code. We've now established they were not. However, the 2010 covenant is actually less restrictive than the original land use code. As Ginny pointed out, or, you know, that it has, it pulled in some of the less restrictive changes that were made to the land use code. So nobody was harmed by moving from the original land use code to the 2010 covenant. So I think that while, yes, we had a different interpretation at the time, and that might have been why people signed it, it, it didn't harm them in any way. Is my interpretation. Do I have that wrong? Now, the people who subsequently were, you know, asked to sign or told to sign a more restrictive covenant, I understand that they might view that they were harmed. But I don't see how anyone who signed the 2010 covenant and it would have been harmed. So. Is anyone, am I missing something?
No, based on my understanding, that interpretation is correct, that the 2010 covenant is.
Less restrictive and more clear.
It is, it is, yeah.
Except for the employee part.
Yes.
Yep, the employee part. That's fair. That's right. The non-qualifying and qualifying. Yep.
Except for that. And I think that
Yep, that's fair.
At this point, we need to discuss that.
Okay.
If you guys are.
So, because I think what, I think what we, yeah.
I mean, I'm going to call it upward mobility, right? And the ability to, to have that option as a household is what I'm hearing from our community members here that they feel is inequitable. And the intent, I'm just going to come back to the intent of the deed restriction purpose is intended to help preserve a sufficient supply of affordable housing to meet the needs of locally employed residents in the R1 School District. That statement is what I'm kind of playing here with what we're, the concern, the valid concerns we're hearing. And I, I would like to hear your thoughts further on that conundrum. I mean, their scarcity creates, scarcity has brought us to this moment here, right? Scarcity of housing. There is not physical, a physical place for people to move if they find upward mobility in their income, but they're still not anywhere near the realm of the free market housing, right? And a lot of these people, in theory, are longtime members of the community and certainly have contributed over decades to what our community is and are still doing so. So I, I guess that's what I'm really kind of wrestling right now is where we draw that line.
Community, there's one way that's already in existence for redrawing that line, and that's to request an exception. And if somebody was skyrocketed into a new income bracket with a new out-of-town job and suddenly didn't qualify, but felt that they were wanting to go through an exception process and make that request and explain those circumstances. We've heard some of those already. There is that image that you can't explain just economic hardship, but in this case, it's not hardship, it's the opposite. So I think there is one avenue for doing that. Don't know that we're going to be able to come up with the answer to that life circumstance for all potential owners tonight. I think that we'd be wise to try to remember that we were originally needing to try to address the, the questions that were posed to us legally about housing actions in the past and how to make things kind of square up for past actions and know that we're never going to get just the right rules to fit everyone's life circumstances. And that's why there is an exception process. I wish I had a better answer.
Well, I think that's an okay answer because I think that the folks who are talking about this, this upward mobility concept, first of all, you can have lots of upward mobility within the community. It's just getting that upward mobility outside the community, right? It's the remote worker. But the people who are talking about that have made it clear that it's really a rare person that does that, right? Yes, we have, we have people who come in with jobs like that. But the idea of somebody from here, you know, suddenly having lots of income from outside the community when they had originally been making it here, is going to be an exception. And I think that that's fine, and that's when we address that. But I don't think that we, yeah, I would say that. I also want to, look, sorry, did you want to talk about that anymore? And I, I hear you all when I said that the 2010 was better than the land use code. And I understand the non-qualifying versus qualifying income is different. But in that case, I go back to what was the intent of, of the land use code? And again, this covenant was meant to not make the land use code more strict, but to clarify it. And so, and we've heard Ginny. And so, and we've heard Ginny Gordon, who was there for those years doing that work, say that. I also had a conversation with another woman who used to be in the community last week, who, who was part of that process and said to me, what is everybody's problem with the 2010 covenant? It's less restrictive than the covenant. So I, I feel like there's been a lot of conversation around that change from the covenant to the 2010, sorry, the land use code to the 2010. And I just keep falling back on the fact that that was a good thing. That is a good document that balances the, the need for something to be very clear and for, yeah, that, that's what I think that the 2010 does. So if you want to know where I'm leaning right now, and I'm ready to have a discussion about it, is, I mean, we could very easily do what we often do, and that's rely on our staff for their recommendation. Because they are the experts, they are professionals, they spend their 24/7 working on this. And our staff has recommended that we only go back for three years. I don't still like that. I, I do feel that people have moved to, you know, people past that three years have been unclear about whether they were supposed to sign a new covenant or not. And so I am leaning towards extending that time period to everybody, but to offer not one step back, but for everybody for simplicity's sake and to balance our conflicting needs that we have here in the community for maintaining housing stock and housing our workforce. Offer everybody to go back to the 2010 covenant, who's on a covenant right now. So that's, I'm kind of leaning towards the alternative four. Maura?
One just point of clarification.
Thank you.
For the people in the three years, I would still recommend they go back to the previous restriction.
And if that be the land use code?
If that's the land use code, they go back to the land use code.
Could they go back to the 2010 covenant if they wanted to?
We could certainly offer them the 2010 covenant, but they should also have the option if, when they bought the property, if it was on the land use code, they should have the option to go to the land.
Because they're in the statute of limitations.
But whatever carried with their property when they bought.
The same plus.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or, yes, and the 2010 covenant.
We could add that as an option. I just want to make clear that those people in that three year period should be given the choice to go back to what they would have purchased on.
Right, right. Or the 2010, or what they're on right now. So what Mike said I liked. What did you say?
I just said that, that the people in that three year statute of limitations get the option that you're proposing for everybody.
Yep.
Plus the ability to go either back to the land use code or whatever.
So 2010. Okay. So that, I'd like to hear what the other commissioners think about that, about alternative four, alternative, alternative four.
I mean, I, I feel that it is certainly a meeting in the middle and find, and I certainly want to give people more of an option than that three year statute of limitations. And, you know, I do think that the 2010 covenant is a strong document that is really lays out some very clear guidelines and address some of the issues that came up over the decades from when the land use code was first established. And so I think it's a good place to land on and that it's going to serve a really good purpose for a lot of those potential 117 homeowners. There, I think that there's got to be some level of compromise here based on the complex nature of, of the hundreds of different variations that we're looking at. And I, once again, will come back to the intent of the deed restricted housing stock and who it's there for. Lance, thoughts or?
I think that we might have stumbled into something that feels about right. Let's rely on the work of Jimmy Gordon in 2010, due to the way that you've proposed with Mike's addition. So let's direct staff to prepare that option as a potential resolution for further discussion and potential vote.
Okay. And then there were a few nuances we discussed as we went through this. You added the one, Maura, about the folks who were within the three years. Then there was also a question about who, people who had purchased since this discussion started and whenever we finalize this. I think that those folks should also be offered to go back to the 2010. Because it's sort of like just a timing thing that they happen to buy their house. What do you think about that, everybody? Or do you want to flush that out in whatever proposal you bring to us?
Don't think we're talking about a large number of deals in progress. If we're talking about less than a dozen, probably half dozen.
Yeah.
So I think that being inclusive and generous is probably simpler than trying to establish the line. Let's say anything in play gets exactly what you're offering. And as soon as we make the vote, then that's when that offer closes.
Okay. And that would mean basically any existing property would have had that option, right? And it's just that we're not going to keep, as somebody mentioned, like offering the 2010 every time the property is turned.
So you would want to treat the folks who are intervening potentially a month and a half or two months purchases with the same right as the people that are in the three year statute of limitations.
Because they're.
The 2010 or whatever previous version for.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think that's fair.
Just.
And then the other addition would be the removal of our two properties from any.
Oh, yeah. So we would exclude Lance and Anne's properties from any reversion.
I think there are properties, if I'm understanding a message from Nancy correctly, there are properties that have sold in 2025 that were on land use code, stayed on land use code. So they wouldn't get any offer.
Sure. Right. Jared?
I just wanted to kind of try to summarize for clarity.
Thank you. All right, we're all going to.
Got it or saying you're a moron.
Yeah.
Thank you. We've been in this room for almost 12 hours, so.
We're, we're talking about the 117 current covenant, and those are specific to some version of the covenant being offered to revert to the 2010 covenant regardless. And for those who had transferred within the last three years, giving them the option to revert to whatever the previous owner had to the 2010 covenant or still offering the 2023.
Or what, yeah, whatever they're on. That's the group that's on the 2023 covenant.
Some of them, yes.
Yeah. So I think you're, we're offering the last three years, people start, and that's back to June, actually, it's back to June 1st of 2022, right? That's exactly the date.
So the date of the resolution is that.
Right. They can have either what the previous owner was on, the 2010 covenant, or what they, what they have in hand, whatever that may be, their current covenant. Okay. Okay.
What, not the OUC? What about the, yeah, what do you do with the OUC? Where people were forced to sign covenants?
I, I think that what, I think what I feel about that is that nobody was forced to sign a covenant in 2010, in 2010. Now, anybody, okay, but you're talking about people who signed the covenant and.
Yeah. So, yeah, I, I think you were agreeing, what I heard you say was that you were agreeing that anybody in the three year until, from June 1st, 2022, until this resolution is passed, would have those options go to what the previous owner had, the 2010 covenant, the current covenant, or the land use code.
Well, only the land use code if that's what the previous owner had. They can go to whatever the previous owner had, whether it's the land use code or a covenant. They could go to the 2010 covenant, or they can stay on the covenant they signed. I think what we're not suggesting is that people who, of the 117 people, that they are being given the option to go back to the land use code. And the reason we're not doing that is because we feel that the 2010 covenant is superior to the land use code, that it balances the need for preserving workforce housing with housing people who actually work here and also clarifies a lot of information that was vague in the land use code. So that's, that's our proposal. They get to go to the 2010. Did I, do the other commissioners agree with that? Or are you suggesting that some of the 117 people, which would actually be 88 people, be allowed to go back to the land use code, which allows remote workers to buy property here?
Not the suggestion that I heard you make.
Wasn't what I intended. And again.
opposed to Commissioner's suggestion of the three options, the previous owners, the 2010 covenant.
It's just for the three year.
Yes, for the three year.
No, I'm not a listener.
No, I'm not. I think it's a compromise and it's a clean option.
So three of you are tentatively giving us direction to prepare a resolution that ciphercates and takes those folks in the statute of limitations plus the additional two months or two months. And then offers everybody else that's on a covenant, the ability to revert to the 2010 covenant, excluding your and our commissioner.
Yep.
Okay. Is there any other things that you'd like first do as in preparation for this resolution? You can have this as soon as next week.
I, I don't have any, I don't think we need to provide any further direction on that, do we? Maura, do you have any questions for us?
Special meeting, we have plenty of room on it.
Okay.
We can have it ready for next week.
I guess, would you like at that time, at the same time, an updated proposal for the process for implementing this in a timeline?
Sure, yes. You want cake with that?
I'm looking mostly at Jared because we'll have to put our heads together to come up with that and Pam.
Is that possible or is that too much?
Well, yeah, is that something we can do in a week or do we want two weeks?
I cannot promise it will be fully fleshed out, but I think we can put the bones together.
Maybe, maybe a suggestion, if we have the resolution for the 23rd, then we go to the next two weeks later on August 6th, regular meeting for the process.
30th is a regular.
We thought there was no meeting on the 30th.
There is. Okay, we can do this. Did you do the 30?
I don't, wait, you're done here on the 30?
Let's stick with August 6th then for the timeline and we'll process and still have time.
Wait, wait, wait. I have, I have an idea. I would like to stick to the 23rd because I feel like we have momentum here. And again, I'd like to start building housing and not dragging this out. But recognize you don't have to have all the legal documents done. Like last one time, you provided like drafts of the documents that homeowners and property buyers would be signing. I'm not looking for that. I'm just looking for kind of a.
It could be a high level for your feedback.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
A draft, as it were.
Exactly. Does that make sense to you guys?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And then if we need to, we can come back again on the 30th. Oh, is that only CBOE? Can you guys hold your comments until after the meeting's over, please? Thank you.
It's a special meeting.
But is it only for that one topic? Okay. So we could have other, we could address it on the 30th as well.
But make sure.
He'll be on the 30th.
He will.
Oh, sorry. Did I get it wrong? Oh, not the 6th. Okay. That's somebody else out on the 6th.
I, I'm out on the 6th.
But, okay, let's try to get as much done as we can on the 23rd.
You know, but, but if it's done at a certain date, I feel like we can still function, you know, whether Lance is here or I am.
Or you are here. Okay.
We have a forum and.
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I want to address, I want to address something that we've heard a number of times today, which is that some people don't feel like they have total clarity on all of the versions of the land use code, all of the versions of the covenant and other topics. I want you to know, I feel like I do have well sufficient clarity to make this decision. And I believe that the other commissioners do, please correct me for wrong. And we have been at all of these meetings. We have read every document. We have had meetings with our staff when we've had questions. We are elected to do that job, to have as much information as anybody in this room. And I understand there is still confusion in the public, but I don't want you to feel like I have confusion. Yes, I don't have 100% knowledge of every covenant and every version of the land use code, but I do understand what happened in the past and that it wasn't right and that we are doing the best job that we can to make it right without losing our housing stock and our community. And so I'm sorry if everybody doesn't feel totally comfortable with the direction that we're giving today. But it's time to make a decision and that's what we were elected to do. And that's where, why I'm pressing to this, for this to move forward today. So anybody else have anything to add?
No, but I, I agree in that it's been many, many meetings and documents provided to us leading up to, to this decision point. And I hear loud and clear that the greatest need in our community is to work towards building more housing and that, that is one of, that is our goal, really. And being able to move forward and accomplish that so that the next generation and three generations forward are going to have a place to live as well as our aging population. And there, there's a big need and we need to get to work on that. And I think we all really have the, the desire to try to make this as right as we could and correct some mistakes that were made so that we can move forward in a more straightforward way that works for the community at large. You.
Well said, Dorothy.
Okay, I think we are ready to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a motion?
I move to adjourn.
Circle.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Ayes, well, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your engagement. And there will be other opportunity for public comment when we review this resolution next week. Thank you.
Long day.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, thanks, you guys. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.